...making the meeting for the city council, City of Southfield for Monday, July twenty first, two thousand and fourteen. That's perfect, he's called the board.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Oh.
Okay, Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Cyver?
Here.
Mr. Frick, Kathy?
Very nice, Mr. Moss.
Um, Ms. Seymour?
Yeah.
Good story.
You have seven members.
Well, our agenda is the approval agreement for the rehabilitation of Eleven Mile.
Yes, ma'am, President. I'm going to ask for the assistance of Lee Schultz on this. Council, uh, within our budget that was adopted, uh, for the current fiscal year, we had a project for a surface, a recon- recon-
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation of Eleven Mile Road, twenty-three-hundred feet east of Incester. I'm going to ask Lee to give you the specifics on the project.
Hello, good afternoon or early evening. Uh, we have, this piece of Eleven Mile Road is from Incester, twenty-two-hundred feet to the east, where it meets up with a project that was done a few years back as part of the interchange project. So this is really that last stretch of road over there, um, that has yet to be resurfaced. We have M.D.A. contract documents here, and that's what we're ultimately seeking approval for. Um, this project is going to be a rehabilitation, a little more than just resurfacing. What we're doing is putting a couple inches of stone over the existing road, and then putting five-and-a-half inches of asphalt on top of that. So we're going to get a heavy asphalt cap on top of that. Uh, the purpose of this approach is to eliminate all the possible undercutting that we are expecting just by looking at the surface of the existing road. So that layer of stone pretty much separates the old pavement structure from the new pavement structure. Uh, another piece that was not, it's not actually part of the M.D.A. agreement, but what we would like authorization to move forward with is a change order for about sixty-six thousand dollars to install some medians in the corridor in what is currently the, the center left turn lane. So that's a concept with some of the grass medians right now. Um, as part of the road project, we're not going to put the landscaping in. It's basically prepped for a future project, so we could develop some plans. Um, but as part of the road project, it was appropriate to cut in, curb some of these islands up. We're going to be putting in conduits for, uh, in case we want to do lighting along that median and irrigation. So the conduits will be in place, so a future project wouldn't require any digging up of the right-of-way to make that happen. Um, and with cooperation from the Passion Recreation Department, they've told us they want to see a good, um, planting bed mix of soil that goes in. So we'll be approaching the contractor with your approval, uh, to get a price for that work. The estimate is about sixty-six thousand dollars. The construction project is supposed to be starting in early August, and this would be completed around mid-October. During Phase Two of the project, the road is actually going to be closed to, through traffic, and so the vehicles that need to access to their businesses or to their, um, residents there will be just driving on a temporary road surface, domed, basically. And some of the larger complexes do have access off of Incester Road, so those complexes will most likely just use that to avoid the construction area. So the fiscal impact here, we have the total estimated construction cost, this is without the median, of nine-hundred-eighty-three-thousand dollars, four hundred, nine-hundred-eighty-three-thousand, four hundred dollars. The federal aid share is six-hundred-twenty-three-thousand, seven-hundred-fifty dollars. So the balance after federal aid for the construction as bid is three-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-fifty dollars. Once we add in the median cost, the estimated cost of sixty-six-thousand-one-hundred-forty-six, we come to a Southfield share of four-hundred-twenty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-six. And this will be paid for out of this LDFA fund, and this fund has a happy balance, and this was a very appropriate use for this. On the north side of this piece of road is the old Blue Cross complex. Things are calling it the Metro Center now, where Federal Mogul is going to be moving in, and it just seems like this is a nice corridor and entrance to the city on the west side, so that we can make some future improvements here.
Any questions? Mr. Frick, Kathy?
Yeah. Uh, the, uh, the construction, um, have we done that before in the city? That type where we have crush concrete and then asphalt on top of it?
Yeah, we did that for the majority of the Incester Road project. So the last Incester Road project from nine to eleven, we did this up until we hit the concrete at, that was closer to Eleven Mile Road, but the rest of that, from just south of eleven, all the way down to Nine Mile, was this method. Because a lot of these areas, uh, had shoulders and not curbs, and the grade was appropriate where we could raise the road. In some places, out on Evergreen, or where the development is more dense, uh, sometimes it, it doesn't lend itself to that. It would, it would mess with the grades too much as far as, um, the gray sound people's driveway.
So there's no curbs here?
There's curbs, there's a little bit of curbing there, but we're going to be adding curbs and redoing everyone's drive approach because we're bringing the road up quite a bit. So everyone gets a new drive approach.
And it'll be curbs?
Yes, it'll be curbs.
So we did cement or asphalt?
Concrete curbs.
What is immediately, uh, at the east end of that, I'm trying to see where that would start. What is the condition and what material is it just at the beginning of, on the east end of that?
At the eastern limit?
Yeah.
So that existing pavement there is a concrete pavement that was done as part of that interchange project.
And that is in good condition?
Yes.
The islands that are going in, uh, what kind of planings are going to be in there? Are they going to need irrigation? And who's going to maintain them?
They, as far as any irrigation and the plantings, that will come in the future. Right now, we would, we haven't really even worked out the details. Um, we may just put grass down there, or we may just put mulch, something just so that it's prepped and that it's not bare earth. We don't want erosion problems, but, um, for now, it's just going to be left in an unfinished state, but ready for a future, a future landscape project.
I don't follow you. It's going to have dirt in it, or it's going to be nothing in it?
Well, there will be dirt and planting soil mix, and then, I'm thinking we would probably just cap it with some mulch, something that's going to be low maintenance until the next project where you can install irrigation and a detailed landscape design.
Right now, the scope of work does not include any finished landscaping, but we'll come back and do that as a phase two. Uh, two-and-a-half months ago, we weren't even, we didn't have the LDFA as a funding source. Initially, we were just doing a strip-down, get the road in good condition. When we realized that we had the LDFA, and then the dialogue we had at the last meeting regarding the joint LDFA with Troy, this five-year extension, you've got a fund balance of just under one-point-five million, that we thought we could make a stronger statement and a gateway-type project. Future items to be discussed would probably be some type of S.A.D. district on the maintenance portion. The LDFA statute permits capital expenditures, does not support ma- uh, maintenance of extensive flower beds. So that'll be something we sit down and negotiate with, you know, hopefully the folks at the, uh, Mr. Wilson, the owner of the Metro, the former Blue Cross Blue Show building will be at the table, as well as some of the other folks. We've not got to that level of detail.
I thought he was going to come and, and so we could meet him.
If I'm correct, uh, he is in town every Tuesday, and I know Council President met with him, but we are court-going to attempt to coordinate some meetings with, that he can meet council members.
Yeah, because, uh, I'm very concerned, as I stated Thursday, is that that place looks very unkept and very, uh, if a ghost town. And, and I just, uh, want to be assured that, that it looks, at least the front end, I can't imagine that it was even put on the market in the condition that it's in. And, uh, so I want, I want that to, at least, uh, that one drive that comes in, uh, it actually, it doesn't come in on Three Hundred, it comes in on the other one. Comes in on, I think Three Hundred is, uh, is past that island, isn't it? Where Federal Mogul's going, I think that's the second building?
Yeah, it's probably the entrance, the second boulevard entrance to the complex.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I wanted to see a landscaping plan is really what I'd like to see, because that thing, way Blue Cross should have left that, it's just, it's an embarrassment. Uh, the corporation would leave that, that facility like that, maybe try to market in the condition that it's in. Uh, but I would, and I'd like to see a time certain when we say what's going to be on those islands, because the last thing I want to see is, is the weeds coming up, and then we try to hack the weeds. I mean, it's going to either maintain them, cover them with cement or something like that. I mean, I, I just, I just could tell you, because we have that at Wilton Drive, and when we got the auto, we, uh, auto guy there, who, uh, you're part of his site plan, we told him, and he would adopt that, that little boulevard in there, and he did, and it came out real nice. And so, maybe we could talk them into adopting these islands, and when they do the maintenance, I thought they have to do is cut this as well, it wasn't that much, and it's, actually totally in front of their buildings.
Right.
Except for a DTE at the end.
Now, by the time this project is done, it actually gives us lots of planning time through the winter to figure out, um, the next steps for that area, to have a more detailed landscape plan. Mary Carlock has been working on some concept drawings already.
But I want that entrance way for Federal Mogul to, I'd like to see some landscaping plans, not to hold up the, the Federal Mogul transfer, but I'd like to see that landscaping plans for the development, so that it's put back in the shape, parking lots and the rest of it.
Yeah, we couldn't address that from the planning department to check their approved landscape plan that already is in existence for that site, and just get them to clean things up out there. That's going to be separate from what we do as part of the road project.
Yeah, I know it's separate, but that, that place has to start looking nice. It's Southfield, and it's a major corner in our city, and it's a well-traveled, and it's almost entranceway into a light industrial area there, and, and I think that those who already are leasing space in that area and owning buildings in that triangle deserve to have that done and done properly.
Yeah, I agree with you, Frick, Kathy, on that, especially since there's some things in New Incester that are being granted, uh, landscaping is very, very important. Mr. Fraser?
Yes, uh, you said that the ser- new surface will have stones and then a five-inch cap on top of it?
Yeah, five-and-a-half inches.
Five-and-a-half inch? How will that join the east end and the west end? Uh, do you taper it down so that it's not really five inches when, where you meet the other?
No, I thought it's the areas at the eastern and westernmost limits of the project, we would excavate a little further so we can maintain still the five-and-a-half inches and, so, but then be able to taper down to meet the existing grade.
Okay, so, um, and that, it said, when you made your presentation, you said the stone separates the old surface from the new surface. Uh, I would think you'd want to bond it to the new, the old surface.
But because the old surface appears, from what we're seeing on the top, it looks like it's got some subgrade issues. We're seeing a lot of deflections out there, not just, not just blown-out joints, but moving pavement, which, uh, the stone will help separate it, because we don't want to inherit those same issues. If we had come in and just done a standard milling overlay, I think, once we milled it, we would have found a lot of what we call soft spots, areas that we would have had to cut out and dig up, and it would have really upped the price of the whole project. So this is a heavier fix, a little bit of a heavier fix here, and a wave brought up the control costs, and it's a little bit of a good road.
Are we fooling ourselves by doing it this way?
I think it's worth very well on Incester, and, you know, H.R.C., we're the design engineers on this project, they've done it in other places as well, and so far so good, they've had a lot of success with this approach.
Okay, um, the other thing is, uh, and Fred, the money, it just comes up. Usually, you put a little extra in for administrative, uh, wiggle room, and here there's done. Are you sure these numbers are, are going to be okay?
Contract test, but hopefully.
Yeah, well, these are the, the, this, these estimates are for the actual construction. This does not cover the construction engineering. So those are typically, you know, tack-on fifteen percent, and those are the construction engineering costs. So we've gone back and forth, sometimes we've included them as part of our council items, and sometimes we haven't, as something that we can continue to do.
I'm just used to seeing-
It tells more, tells more truth in your-
If I can get a ten percent contingency, I'll take it. We're, uh, we're going to work to make this number come in, but if we get a contingency, we'll take it. Yeah, so.
Well, when you approach a job, you think you've taken everything into consideration. And take Franklin Road, for instance.
And Franklin was one of those that we didn't have enough.
Yeah, we would have had enough if we put a contingency in there. But, uh, if you're that good, fine, you know, more power to you.
Staff would, would, would like to do that, I mean.
That's it.
Mr. Dorn, um, wouldn't it make more sense to put the irrigation in now before you?
Well, that's what the conduit's for, so we can run it.
So you aren't running conduit?
Right, well, that's, whether it's lighting or irrigation.
All right.
And I, two weeks ago, we didn't have this median concept on our mind, but when this joint LDFA conversation came up, uh, the five-year extension, taking a look at, we have this fund in one-point-five, just kind of made it a lot more sense if we could make, uh, develop a road project that makes a stronger statement, welcome to Southfield, something to strengthen the western end of this American Drive. Um, the other thing is to, you know, create a greater sense of place, you know, something that says, you know, you, you recognize this as a distinctive part of the city.
The other thing I was going to say, we're, um, I believe, supporting a tax abatement from Federal Mogul, and, um, the, uh, trade-off, if they've adopted the median after all, they're going to be the major tenant in, in that center. Um, might be a nice return.
And if, if I can interject? Uh, the ownership group of the Blue Cross Blue Show Building is making an eight-million-dollar investment as part of this project. Uh, they're not, that eight-million-dollar investment is not being abated. Our agreement in the tax tribunal is as each building is occupied, the values go up to market. So if he's not asked for any sweetener on that, I'm not sure I want to tie it, would recommend tying it to the tax abatement. I'd like to sit down and work with Mr. Wilson. He still has another six-hundred-thousand square feet, that he's got a vested interest in making sure that we could get his buildings full, and I think what we've communicated with, within the last couple of weeks through this LDFA, we're trying to get as creative as possible to get this space reoccupied and, um, moving in that direction. I, I wasn't able to join you when, when you met. I'd like to bring him in, and my, what I've said to Ms. Freeman, is I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Wilson do a series of, you know, maybe two council people at a time, meaning just so we can know who he is, if he's not willing, he's, he's not here at night, he's not here on Monday nights, so, um, and so if we could set a couple of meetings up and continue to negotiate a commitment out of, from the M.B.A.R.
That's fine, I'm just throwing it down there. Thank you.
Yes, Kathy? Well, this will move to our superintendent there. I just need to-
And we are going to wordsmith that, and we'll give the Council President language for the ten percent contingency. Lee, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, you know, the, it's not just the contingency, it's the construction engineering. That's the part. I mean, the contingency is kind of built into our process already with council approval, but as that construction engineering, let me find out what that, what that actual number is, so that, so that we know.
Okay, so, you can now, uh, ring the meeting with that number.
Is it usually ten percent? Is it usually ten percent? Including construction?
Yeah, sure.
I know it's a little tall. We'll move to the next panel, when I attend, and I'm going to get very busy here. Thank you, all.
Um, I'm going to ask the council, I just got word from the boss in here that, uh, I can defer these to our regular meeting, so we don't have to point them here, and so if we, if no one has a problem with it, we'll just move it into our regular meeting, appoint them and square them in at the regular meeting.
Thought you were going to call it all then.
No, and just for clarification-
Came real close.
And just for clarification, we had some, you know, internal technical difficulties on Friday, so that's why we put this on the earlier meeting that we're doing, so we could get them on the regular, so I haven't checked it.
I was trying to protect you.
It's okay.
Yeah. We, we, we're going to, yeah, so that I would introduce him, and then, uh, we'll provide a minimum certificate to the building department, if it's not. Do you have one, Sophie?
As, um, part of the city's continued development efforts, you know, I, I think it's important that the city recognized, two thousand and five, the City of Southfield was one of the first meetings to go through the redevelopment-ready certification. You recently completed that certification for a second time. There's been a general consensus that we've never done in examination of our building department, yet the building department is such a critical role of our economic development efforts. We started to take a look at what we could do with our building department, and the city currently has five consulting engineering firms under contract. Uh, one of those firms is, is Wade Trim, who operates, uh, a number of, uh, they provide a number of administrative services to communities, including administrative services to building departments. Uh, so what you have before you is a proposal to bring Wade Trim, uh, and the capacity and the scope of work includes that they would provide an intro building official and a building department director, that would be one person, uh, and then prepare a restructuring plan of the building department. Phase one, which, uh, which, you know, if approved by council, would start mid-July through February, and they, Wade Trim would come in and act as our chief building official, uh, for the city. Uh, and then, we would immediately move to phase two, which is the departmental evaluation, which is on, which would be the month of August, and we're looking at policies and practices, workflow, organization, staff work assignment, customer service and performance. Phase three would be the development of a restructuring plan for the department. The, I have representatives here from Wade Trim. The proposed rates for this service are consistent with those rates that are covered in their engineering service. The scope of work for that engineering service contract, the RFQ, is broad enough that we could have other consulting services within it. Uh, you know, I think this is an opportunity for the City of Southfield to make a very fundamental shift in how we do business and to engage our business community at a very different level. Uh, I am, find myself sometimes frustrated that, as I interact with other city administrators and managers, that the building departments within their groups as a call center operate at expenditure neutral. When you engage them in a dialogue about communication, where tablets are being used, texts are being used, and I love the opinion that if Best Buy can let me know within two miles when that new washer is being delivered, why can't we have that same level of communication with our, you know, with the person who's leasing up the tenth floor of any building? So this is a large shift in how we've done business. I believe, I've spoken to most of the council individually about this conceptionally, and I'd like to have, have your approval on this item tonight.
Any questions, Council?
A question for, um, phase one, what's your name again?
Phase one is a six-month plan, and that brings two staff people in, and the, those fees, and this is the standard of how we submit any one of our engineering contracts, that's a hundred-seventy-five thousand. If they'll have an hourly rate that's consistent with our contract with Wade Trim, then phase two, which is that initial evaluation is sixteen thousand, and phase three is the thirty-one-thousand.
All right, yeah. Yeah, that's about a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
But that, you're putting in, you're putting essentially two people and a clerical, and, yep.
You're putting two people and a clerical?
Is one, one, one chief building official, as well as a clerical.
Mr. Frick, Kathy?
Yeah, Fred, I know you've discussed this with the department, but I'd like to know, uh, how it's kind of functioned for his staff people, who do they, who do they get directions from?
Wade, Wade Trim will be appointing the chief building official. He'll be here at least thirty-six hours a week. They will be reporting to-
As his department director?
Yes, they will be reporting to, um, the, the chief building official, and that is, uh, Mr. Modell, who's here tonight.
Give me this again, I'm slow. Who, where is, oh, yes.
Sorry, um, Barry Cullenford has been acting.
Okay.
Um, he is-
Never mind. Uh, I, I just been very, I, I just don't want to run into a situation where every, where we're, we're, we're going into the department and bringing in people to, to operate it.
Mr., I can tell you this, Mr. Cullenford will no longer be the chief building official for the department.
Okay, so, so who gives the orders to staff in building department?
It will be the individual from Wade Trim who will, who will be named our chief building official during this period.
And then, and then there'll also be a study of that entire department, the recommendations to you as to how you go forward?
That's correct, and I may turn around and engage one of our committees, either finance or neighborhoods or, you know, one or econo-, one of our committees for some input as we go through this interim, so I'd like to get some counsel input as well.
As a member of the building department, then informed on this, and have been?
I, I have spent, in the last few days, approximately three, four hours with Mr. Cullenford on this. Mr. Cullenford did meet with his department late this afternoon. Until this item's approved, I don't have anything official to go in and tell the department.
Are they at all aware of this?
I, I, the answer is, I believe, yes, and they, for a couple of weeks, they have known that there's a dialogue.
I just, I just, I just don't want to complicate what is already something that doesn't seem to be functioning to its maximum. And by bringing this in, the whole purpose of it is, is to restructure that department and, and get it to function better, get more efficiency out of it, and, and so, but I just don't want it to, you know, sit, lay there, and then we have some- just don't want it to, you know, sit, lay there and then we have some problems within, I, I just don't need that.
I will tell you the first week is going to probably be, you know, there'll be some challenges.
Okay.
This firm has done this before in other communities, um, going, going through, it is a manageable situation.
Oh, yeah. Being business, I know, when you bring somebody over everybody else and, I've been there for quite a while, that disrupts the whole operation for a while, but I just want everybody to know it's, it's coming, that's, that's important.
And you said Mr. Bodell was here.
Yes, we have, uh, Mr. Bodell is here, Chip Smith from Wade Trim, and Sean Keel, and he's one of the principals from Wade. Do you want to use the podium perhaps? Sean is one of-
Good evening, could everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Mayor, council, Mr. Zorn, thank you. My name is Sean Keel and I'm the vice president of Wade Trim in charge of our municipal services group. We have sixty employees that I oversee that are engineers, planners, building officials, building inspectors, electrical inspectors, and landscape architects. The team that we're talking about tonight is one of our chief planners, Chip Smith, just raise your hand there. Chip will be our project manager for this, and Jeff Bodell, Jeff Bodell is our building official, will be your interim or active interim building official. The idea is to kind of be some eyes and ears on the ground, we will be giving direction, but we'll also be observing and taking notes. The phase two that Mr. Zorn described in the proposal is sort of a, a first impression, if you will. You know, we don't have any preconceived notions, we are currently working with the city of Pontiac, we're currently helping in a different way in the city of Taylor, we've done interim services in Van Buren Township in the last year, if you will. So our, our goal is to come be part of the team, come see what's going on. Mr. Zorn, I think said it accurately, I'm sure there's gonna be some challenges in the opening week, but Jeff has, how many years, Jeff, did you have at Redford Township?
I got twenty-six total, running a building department.
Twenty-six total in, of experience operating and he can stand up and say hi if you'd like him to. Jeff, come on up, Jeff, why don't you come up as well since we're all here, if there's any appropriate questions. These two will be more involved in the direct team, working with Mr. Zorn than I will, and we appreciate the opportunity to, to help you.
Hi, nice to see everybody, thanks for having us. My name's Chip Smith, I am the project manager for this effort. Jeff and I work closely together in a number of communities, as, to reiterate what Fred said, is really the purpose of, of engaging with us is to have somebody come in and, and serve as your acting building official, Jeff has twenty-six years of experience doing that, but he also brings a, a different philosophy, a philosophy that Wade Trim has, is that the building department is a key part of the economic development team. And in a lot of communities that we've worked in across the state, the building department isn't brought in at the, the initial level and they aren't necessarily viewed as part of the economic development team. And in the, the competitive climate that we're in now, whereas Southfield, we have to put our best foot forward and be welcoming and do everything that, that we can to attract economic development while ensuring that we have safe, high-quality places for the folks that live here and own property here, building department is increasingly important in that role. And one of the things that, that we've done in the communities that, that we've worked in is come in and offer this evaluation service where we look and see where you are, what your practices are, look at the data, do the analysis, and then use our, our experience and, and industry best practices to try and come up with a restructuring plan. And if it were easy enough to say, you should do A, B, or C, we'd just tell you do A, B, or C, but every community has a unique situation and unique factors influencing what's going on. So part of the reason that we think being embedded is, is so crucial to developing that, that restructuring plan. And the other, and the last point I would make is, it's really, really difficult to come up with a restructuring plan while you're running the department at the same time, which is why we have the three phases in one, we have multiple staff people involved here.
If you have a question, you can tell us, or you can-
Yeah. That to me, what you're doing now is a complete renovation of the building department, correct? Okay. I, I'm not against it, I'm in favor of it, but I'd like to know the philosophy that you people, when the developers come to us, and how do you treat them?
I, I want to answer that, and I'm glad you asked. If you looked at my resume that I turned in to Sean, you know, four or five years ago, it says that for the last twenty years, I am a partner with that developer and the city and the eventual tenants that go in. Too many times, building departments end up playing what one of my inspectors called the gotcha game. They can't play gotcha, they gotta play help you, because the only way you're gonna move that economic development forward is to help the developers, you don't make them guess what's wrong with their plan. I had a, I had a fire inspector many years ago that did just that. I finally had a meeting, and it was with big people, Ford Motor and Factory Mutual and the biggest players in the industry, and the inspector didn't want to tell them what's wrong with their plan. And, and I finally said to, to our fire inspector in that particular community, either you tell them what's wrong with their plan or I'm issuing them permit anyway. And when it was all said and done, they hadn't like named what brand sprinkler had they, it was most ridiculous, they were held up for months. So you have to, at some point, you know, because that was in a different department, I hadn't actually had talked to the fire chief before, told him that I was gonna step on as inspector that day, you have to help people move in. And if you don't, it's such a competitive market, the places that do help the people are the ones that are gonna end up with tenants and end up with the new buyers and end up with the development. So, unique, I have had developer, you know, engineering will always have a pre-construction meeting when they have a big project. I've been having pre-construction meetings on the large developments for twenty-five years. Bring me all the people, I'm bringing the inspectors, we're all gonna work as a team together to get this project off the ground and started, and that's been my philosophy for twenty-five years, and I've been very successful.
And it's really about customer service, from the time somebody calls with an idea to the day that they get their certificate of occupancy. It's about putting the best face on the city, making sure that the customer service, the way that they're treated at every step of the way is exemplary, because that matters in recruiting people to invest here.
You, I am, I am a bowing. You answered every single thing that I was worried about, that we've been going through. Somebody must talk to you.
Well, I, I'm in this position because I've found historically building departments very, very difficult to work with. So the answer was, start putting me in charge of some of them. And so the, where I work, the emphasis is on providing outstanding customer service. And it's been bigger challenges in some places than others, but, you know, when, when we're competing for crucial investments and jobs and bringing new business to town, every little bit matters, you know, from just how you answer the phone to how you interact with somebody out on a site.
Go out and get the people back who walked away from us because they didn't have help in their project. You, you answered everything properly, and I only hope that you carry it out properly. And I'm all in favor of the project for what you're, for what you're starting out with.
You just staggered.
Actually, you sort of answered my concern, I, what I think is an issue here is a, a sort of a rigidity, it's, rather than develop alternatives or other ways to do things, there is a certain amount of flexibility and interpretation in building codes. And I, I just think it's lacking in our, our department as well as, I think we've all had concerns about customer service. So I was, I was gonna ask you a few more pointed questions, but I think you, you've already answered it. Mr. Zorn had talked to me about this, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and I, I serve in favor of it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Zorn, and your responses are right on, I share with Mr. Lamb, I want that philosophy that you're talking about to continue. This is kind of getting into the weeds, but we have been struggling to get an apartment inspection or rental inspection program. And that's something that while we are going through this, I don't want to push back a whole year, we have been struggling with how do we as a city, and it continues to be a major issue in our community, these multi-family buildings, how do we ensure that when someone moves to a building, that we as elected officials have an expectation and that we're validating? And it keeps getting kicked down the road, we, we've gotta embrace something that, you know, I just, well, I'm so much in favor of this, I don't want this to be in the mood of a major need we have in the community.
I think we've had enough discussion with Wade Trim that there's an understanding that there'll be certain new, what I call product development ordinances coming down the pipeline. We had talked on that, have also indicated council and as well as the administration's frustration over single-family rental. The, the, trying to get something that, where we can consistently get a number that makes some sense, the compliance, I think most of us think, and I'm in agreement that we're not even near, if I thought we were ninety-eight percent compliance, I'd rest, but I, I don't believe we are. The septic to sewer, and I've had another group doing a lot of work, the septic to sewer to at least identify who's not connected, making sure they're, they're, then the vacant property registration, that, and there will be some other product development things that come out of joint effort with ordinance over some of these perennial problems, and we've got some building, some things, we may even find ourselves looking at, I haven't talked about it, but there will be other things that are looked at, and how we handle our civil infractions, that the revenues go through the core, that, we may put some other things under the microscope during this six-month period. So, you know, the next month, ideas from council, I think I've heard some of them as I've engaged you individually on this topic, that I, I think there's gonna be, you know, some, the, the scope of work will be modified relative to ordinances administered by the building department.
And I just want to say, this is a concern, the building department reports to the city administrators, and I will say as an elected official, especially during this process, I would be very clear that that reporting and you report out to the council, because if we're in the process of evaluating a department and you're pulling some council members out to be part of that discussion, because this is an investment, and really this is a part of what administratively we have said, and I think I'm hearing everyone wants it, and so I would strongly recommend that we continue the reporting structure as it is and report out to the council. And so that you are really in a position to, to evaluate that, because the more people you bring in, what's the true evaluation of what you're doing? And then it gets murky, because we are actually, you're asking the council for a six-month period, I think it is, and there needs to be some benchmarks, there needs to be clear what they are, and then you have the responsibility of reporting back to us, is it working, this is what we're getting, and in that six-month period, you may have to come back for any reason to say, give us updates. So I just, I, when you start expanding from who is giving the direction, to me for something that is as transitional as this, it gets, starts spinning in the air. And I, I would really love to see the reporting structure as it is now.
Okay.
Because if they, if any ordinances are proposed, you're, you have to bring it before the council, and the council has to say yea or nay, and I get that.
And that first benchmark, in my mind, will be after the phase, the phase two, at end of August. So the call in September will come back and I'm gonna ask council to, in the, we'll schedule a good discussion, because that first, you know, could be, I could see being an hour and a half type topic, it could be that task.
The last thing, as both council president and city administrator and council, the one thing I didn't hear was the team approach, our building department, our fire, our chief of police or whoever's over the fire department, that has been the most frustrating part to me of getting something through the city of Southfield because it's top market, every department, and I really would like to see incorporated in that, since other communities, if you talk to them, when a developer comes, it is a team meeting and everyone is sitting down hearing the same thing, and if there is a problem, it doesn't become an issue after one department approves, then it moves to the, to the fire department. And so that's the one thing I didn't hear and that I think is so powerful, when cities are actually efficient and embracing of, of construction. So I just wanted to bring that, Mr. Zorn.
Yeah, I have a few questions about the other communities that you've worked with, with Pontiac and Taylor, were these also kind of restructuring goals, or have you had prolonged renewable contracts with these communities?
In Pontiac, we, we were engaged beginning in 2011, and we actually serve as their embedded building department. When you walk in the door in the building and planning department, everybody that works there is an employee of Wade Trim, yet they're all embedded in the city of Pontiac net, and has included Jeff for the last couple of years. In Taylor, we, our, our engagement has varied, but we do plan reviews in Taylor. We've done some fee studies for them, you know, Sean's standing here, I know he thinks I'm crazy, but I'll give you an example of a horrendous problem that Pontiac had that we fixed. Well, not everybody's happy, but it's much better than it was. They had enormous rental inspection fees, so bad that the people that had a register to properties would do everything in their power to hide, stay down low, stay out of sight, can't find them, and so on. And our contract there was for a percentage of fee, which, you know, naturally the more people I can get to register, the more money we would make, but you also, you have to have more people to do the work. Well, I went to Chip and then he had to go to Sean and say, Mr. Bodell wants to drop the rental fees by two-thirds, which we did, because it prohibited people and we then doubled and tripled the amount of people that would sign up for the program, and again, the goal is not play gotcha, the goal is play help you, and therefore, that program has been building and building and building, and, you know, they have an enormous rental occupancy rate. So that was a big problem, we solved, we actually lowered the fees and solved the problem. Well, and I would say that all of the clients that we work with, Van Buren's another example where we simply plugged in when they lost their, their building official. And so we were plugged in there for an interim period of time while they were undergoing a search for their economic development director, we provide engineering services there, we were brought in under the same kind of contract that, that Mr. Zorn has prepared to bring us in here. We've done some work in, in Allen Park, we've consulted with lots of other people kind of on, here's some best practices, whether or not we have engaged with them to do full-on restructuring plans or to come in and provide building officials, really varies from place to place.
That gives me actually a sense of comfort, especially the Van Buren example, because I'll, I'll tell you Fred, our, you know, I, I like that this is a six-month thing and then we'll figure out where we're going from there. This does fit into our vision when we appointed you about staff reorganization and organization charts, so I'm comfortable with this proposal, but I, I, a goal at the end I think has to be a Southfield building official. I don't want to see, you know, a prolonged contract, just because, you know, we're a city with a very unique need, two-thirds of our tax base is commercial, so that's, that's a beast in and of itself, and obviously have to take care of the residential building demand. So I'm in favor of this because it does fit into our direction to you from day one, but my, I would like to see at the end of this should be really a restructuring that brings us back to a Southfield building.
If I could make, I really think we all, and myself included, keep a very open mind about the past, how this may, what the final gyration may look like as we go through this evaluation. There may be a hybrid model of some sort, one of my objectives is, right now we have a building department that is being subsidized and has that, it doesn't cover all of the true administrative costs that it should, and the swing to the general fund, this could be a million to two million dollar swing if we restructure this. And as we battle issues with- issues with equipment, facility needs, to be able to swing in our general fund, a number like that could be the type of thing that keeps new roofs on buildings, and, you know, maybe every once in a while, we could redo a room, or, you know, just keep it going. So, I have, I've gone in talking with different communities, have seen, I know what Troy's doing. I really think there's going to be something very uniquely fit for Southfield. Part of it is a fifty-year history. It may be our official. It may be a cadre of part-time people. I don't want to get ahead of myself. One of the things I could share with you, in 2006, the South, the Taylor Building Department was put under my supervision. I went from eight point three inspections to eleven. And you're getting what level of inspections per day?
Minimum of fifteen.
Fifteen? I know what it took to just get that. That's why I'm so convinced this is a huge fundamental shift, just to increase staff productivity and then the communication with people. Because I don't believe for one second I was that successful on what I wanted to see in the communication end. And I need someone who's been out in the field, specializes, knows the software, the S and A, they have that experience, and know how to bring a team of people to help us make sure the technology is worth the cost of running.
And I don't know if this makes you feel any more or less comfortable, but we're not coming into this as if we have an answer yet. There's a lot of data that we need to collect and do analysis on before we can even begin coming up with a way forward for Southfield. There's just so many variables that would affect what a final recommendations would be. But it's also, as the mayor mentioned, there's got to be a holistic, you know, view of how you do development.
Yes. Again, this plan, especially, you know, some of the immediate goals of restructuring the department, we've been saying for a little bit at this table, and I'm looking forward to seeing the next six months.
Mr. Rand.
Okay. I'm a little bit astounded at what I heard the mayor saying about apartment inspection. That would be the, first, let me ask you a question. What do you think about apartment inspection? And then I'll give you a story.
Well, I'm going to rely on what I learned many, many years ago, thirty. The communities that, as you age, there is more need to make sure that the structures that are aging with you stay at a level point of maintenance. What happens if you don't do something, and your rents start to drop, the owners don't start to make the money, now you got a problem?
I'm going to stop you there. The apartment inspection, the program itself, is dangerous, and it will lead to what Detroit is doing today, and what happened to Detroit. Now, we have, most of our apartment complexes are good and taken care of. There may be two, no good. Okay, that's one we should take care of. But not make a, an overhead apartment inspection. That will lead to edictions. That will lead to loss of people coming to Southfield and the apartments. It's going to cost more rent. All the developers will raise their rate, because they're going to have to pay for the inspections, twenty-five, fifty bucks, or whatever it's going to be. That's wrong. So if you institute apartment inspections, and you're talking about it, be careful. Be careful. You will have city, you're going to have Southfield like Detroit. Edictions will happen every day. People will be, you're going to kill the city with apartment inspection if you don't do it right.
Don't do it right.
Well, but they're going to have to charge, they'll have to increase the rents, if you have apartment inspection. And that's not right.
Let's do it right.
Yeah. But we'll have to find the right way, and not just go in, popping inspections, go to every single apartment that don't need it. We need to do it right, just like you said.
Okay.
Before we can even have that discussion, I think it's really important to get that first phase of work done, where we get in and do the assessment and come back.
Okay, I'll go with you there. I'll go there.
And I would say to you that Pontiac had this program before we got there. We didn't come in with this as a program we brought to the table. We were simply tasked with administering a program that they already had on the books. And we made it better.
Well, I'm going to watch you.
I hope so.
Mr. Frasch.
Yes. I think that you're probably getting the drift of conversation around the table that something needs to be done. But one of the things that I want to say, when you look at a situation like this, everybody has to keep an open mind, because we may have the wrong people, but we may not. We may have the right people, but they may need different kind of training. Or maybe there's too much work, the number of people that we have. That will all come out with the evaluation. So I don't want us to paint everybody with the same brush before we find out what the real problem is. I do know that you'll probably run into a culture change, because the culture that you bring in, or the expectations that you bring in, will be different than the culture that you're, that's embedded in the city of Southfield at this point in time. And I'm sure that you've worked with that in the past, to put on kid gloves, to bring the cultures without a culture clash.
Stop over the hoes.
Yes. But I think you also hear the frustration of the council and mayor, and even the administrator around the table, of something needs to be done. And based on what we've talked about prior to you coming here, there's really a, we see a pent-up need. So you may end up trying to get a, drink the water out of a fire hose. You know, it's.
I mean, I've tried that.
So if things start, you know, things start to happen, I know there are two or three major things that are, like Burris under our saddle right now, that are unsolved problems that we see as a, is a real clash between the building department and businesses that are unresolved at this point. And it's, and again, it's, I think it's a gotcha. So as Mr. Moss has said, you know, I'm looking forward to the next six months to find out how this is going to work. And I also agree with Mr. Moss that when we get all done, can I don't get to the bottom line before the bottom line is supposed to be gotten to. But I think that, right now, I think that the end result is that we do need a Southfield, the city of Southfield person running the shop, rather than a management agreement. Yes, so, understood. Okay?
Mr. Rand.
Fred, this is a, the big changes to the way the building department has functioned in the city. Have we looked at, make sure there's a smooth transition in that there won't be interruptions as to what projects are presently in the building department? And how will that work out with the things that have to be done through that transitional period?
We don't anticipate any interruptions. The current director will, I believe, will come to terms today, Van Buren, with us in some capacity to the transition, and possibly after.
Who will be attending the staff meetings from the building department?
From the building department, it will probably be Mr. Bodell. It's my intent that we'll be meeting weekly and go through, and there will be meetings with IT, and what can we do with our technology group. There will be a number of meetings, and I'm going to have to be involved in as they come in.
I'd like to see you update your call with something as to how things are going during that transitional period.
A call during the transition, that can be done. That can be done. And that first month of September, then we'll come back, September cowl, and present that first, that phase two evaluation.
No, I, I don't necessarily, first of all, I like what you've said. I agree with everything that you're proposing. We've had some issues with our building department off and on. And I think bringing in what you're doing and the way you're doing it makes perfect sense to me. I don't want to be too critical of people, but I think there have been some, there have been some problems in the details here and there. And we want to have an efficient and very proactive building department. I don't, I don't necessarily think we have to have a Southfield person in charge of this. But I do think we have to have a Southfield person here as a liaison. That's my feeling about it. But as we go forward, you know, this can be talked about more.
If I, I want to make a, you heard Chip say that when you walk through the door in the community where we run the whole department, you know, we answer the phone, you know, City of Pontiac, there isn't ten percent of the customers, maybe, know that we're not employees. Everybody there thinks they're walking in and talking to the employees. We just get our paycheck from somebody else. You know, so our goal is to, the customers, the residents, they're the lifeblood of what happens in the community. And our job is to try to help them. It's not give the ship away. It's not teach them the code when they don't know it, if they're, but it is, it is to make sure that we provide a level of customer service, that when the person walks away from the counter with what they do have to turn in, that when they come back, they can turn it in and move forward.
So where do they go when they, when they want to, do they come to your place of business?
No, no, we're going to be right here.
Oh, you're going to be here. Oh.
Every day.
For now, but what happens during the end of the term?
They're being housed here.
At the end of the contract, we will deliver a restructuring plan for you all to consider and act upon. And I can't tell you what that plan is going to say yet. It could say lots of different things, but ultimately, the Southfield Building Department is always going to be located in Southfield and in City Hall.
But how do people, then, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, that makes sense? But then where are you? Are some of your people going to be here, or are you going to be on the phone?
Jeff will be here.
All the time. After I pass the term?
Up to thirty-six hours a week. After, after this, after this six months, when we deliver a plan, as we said, we don't know what our recommendation will be. We have employees to study, time studies to do.
How do you work with these other groups that you're there?
In, well, in some of them, as an example, in Taylor, they had a problem turning around plan reviews, so people could get started. They turned them all over to us. We do the reviews. And when we have a problem, first off, we're contacting their architects and their builders, not the local people.
But you're working out of your office?
We work it out, we work that out of our office.
That's what I really wanted to say.
Yeah, we work that portion of that necessarily, and after the fact thing. When we're here, we're embedded here.
Okay.
How about, any other question?
So, under the administrative portion, I'd like, I'll ask council that, I'd like council's concurrence that we proceed with the proposal. We would like to add a clause to it, and Ms. Ward and I will have that, that we have the right within thirty days to terminate the contract. We took a look at our engineering contract with Wade Trim, and we're not sure the language is strong as we would like it. So I would like that in the resolution. And then there's the issue of council, councilizing.
If, if in fact, you get to a point where you would be issuing tickets as the building official for the city, we would go through a council resolution to actually make you a city constable. But in the immediate future, you know, maybe that could be done in August or something of that nature.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Is going to the communication portion, do we have an issue with?
Well, I do want to, yeah, I do want to talk about this, the registration of, what is it?
Apartment, apartment, community registration.
Apartment, community, right? Registration.
Right.
The fee, the fee is to be a hundred dollars. And I think that, I've already had someone say that it sounds like one time they're coming from, I mean, I know that. I think the fee ought to be something more reasonable, and not appear that we're trying to make money from this. What I really don't want to do is, we should not subsidize this. We should make our cost. And whatever it costs, this is what we, what we ought to do. And I did talk to one of our property managers, who agreed that the cost, you know, the cost of what it costs us to do is what, what's killing people for. But, um.
Isn't that the rule?
Yeah.
I mean, if we can't make money on stuff like, yeah.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't, but.
I mean, we can.
Right, right.
It's not that we shouldn't, but we can.
It's got to be based on what it costs you to provide.
Yeah. But the other thing I was going to, just wanted to find out about whether we can take into this online, make it easier.
We thought we would, I did mention that to the building department today, and that might be a very easy way of doing it, where they could just go online once a year, put the information in, they're done.
And say, no change.
Yeah, absolutely.
So then you have appropriate fees or whatever.
Right. And, you know, again, I was trying to come up with something nominal. I kind of looked at somebody having to, even a clerk, when you add the fringe benefits in, on an hourly basis, it probably represents, you know, two and a half to three hours. So it was a way of just keeping a system to know that somebody.
But we ought to find out what it's really going to take to do it before we.
Well, I think, again, we kind of looked at these kind of numbers. When we've looked at fees for a couple of hours of work, at what we anticipate, we've gone to seventy-five to a hundred dollars. We can easily adjust this. I mean, we could go with something lower, keep track of what it's cost, if you wanted, and then.
That's uncomfortable.
The fee is by resolution, so this fee is changeable anytime by council, the resolution. So, again, what we've kind of found on a lot of these things is that seventy-five to a hundred dollars is a couple of hours of keeping track of a system, not so much what it costs us when they.
They're ending the joke.
Right. I mean, it's, it's having a system so that we know, for example, you know, ABC company who has some apartments on Providence Drive, hasn't registered in a year, so now we've got to send a letter out. And so, it's just kind of a more modest fee, but to also make sure that we can keep a system to know if we're in compliance or not. So.
I understand, I understand that. I just, I just think it's a little high.
I mean, I, it's a suggestion, it's kind of, again, that we've looked at before, we've kind of attributed it to, again, two and a half to three hours of pretty much of a clerical time.
And can we do it online? Can we have a program, have what I know?
With, with, I'd, with, I can see if they could do that.
Because points that didn't still register them.
Again, it's not so much that we keep, but it's just trying to figure out, what would it cost for the program to know then, someone's got to follow up, someone who's in the city to know that.
I said if it's covered our cost, if that's what takes covered our cost, I'm fine with it. But if it's an arbitrary fee, then I'm not fine with it.
Okay.
But you're saying a hundred dollars covers that cost?
It would. I mean, in general, it would. There will be some people that don't register, and we may have, you know, several letters, we may have to actually do a ticket. We may have to bring them in the court.
People shouldn't have to take for that.
But it, but it's an allocation. It's kind of an allocation of time, what you anticipate, because you never know exactly. But what do you anticipate the program could run you? And again, I was coming up with a more.
You've got a handful of people that are not good at apartments, that we know, and they're mostly self-employed.
Well, I think a lot of them are the out-of-state owners. I mean, that's where we really, and that's what, that's what really has even precipitated the need for this. Because we know with our local apartment complexes, and we know how to get ahold of them.
Yeah, it's a safety issue. It's, and when you have that child, and when you have to get ahold of something, that I understand, that you have to.
And when there was a fire, and the management company, and so forth.
I totally agree with that. Okay.
Just, under the administrative portion, we have, we're moving forward on a water rate study with Mike Rand, Lisa Davis, and Rick. He's here as well for any questions. It's, during the budget, we had indicated that we would be conducting a water rate study. So we are moving the item forward. We outlined a very aggressive capital budget for the water department this year. This will allow us to look more long-range as to what our capital needs are for the system, and ensuring that our rate. system and ensuring that our rates support what our long-term capital needs are. Uh, it will also look at our staff and within that, uh, department as well, and making sure we, uh, we're using the best technology and that relative to our staff in there as possible.
If you intend to increase the water rate, I'm going to give you a name to call it. Water mortgage. Our rates are the highest around.
Uh, actually, as part of the, uh, budget, we surveyed, we are in the lower quartile of our rates.
That's still too high probably to hear.
Okay. Well, this will help us look at, making sure that our rate structure is, is sufficient in the long term to meet the capital needs of the system. And it may come back with some ways to, you know, what, and there may be some things we can do to further reduce our rates.
I'm not going to reply. Because I think that, uh, people, ten hundreds of dollars, why?
Maybe they're using a lot of water.
No, no.
No?
No, they're losing water. And the, the sewage charges are so high, and nobody, nobody checks that, nobody.
We, we have a survey on both our water rates and our sewage rates, and we can, we can share that.
Prove it to me, and I'll, and I'll make it.
Okay.
I can't picture...
Yeah, Fred, I need, uh, I'm just, I'm looking at the waters and seeing, uh, how it's going forward. Have we taken into consideration that there's a lot of stuff in the air, Detroit water, and what's going to happen? And is a rate that's going to go higher? And there's a lot of, I guess, I guess work to take place. Is this the time to look on a plan when we don't know what's going to happen at the Detroit end?
That was the variable that was the most difficult to determine, because we don't know what's going to happen with Detroit. But at the same time, we know that we need to be looking at our system and what our needs are. And the reality is, we will be responding to whatever happens with the Detroit system as it happens, and putting together this analysis that's strengthened our position as Detroit does something, so we may know the full impact on us as well. And what we, we, you know, we know that, you know, the, I've got a PowerPoint from Bob Daddell from Oakland County that was scared, was scared to death when you see some of the things we're talking about with the Detroit system. But this, you know, is obviously what is in our control. Every time Detroit passes a rate increase, our rates from SACLA go up, we, we respond. This year, we raised our points, it was just a little, a little bit over 6%. They're one of the lowest in all of SACLA. The year before, we had no increase. So, but I, I agree that Detroit...
There's a good point about us being paying for redoing the plant and all that stuff, allocating the percentages to the communities, and, and that could just go right out of the ballpark.
This, this may strengthen our position to make some of the arguments we may find ourselves having to make for SACLA and the Detroit system. That uncertainty should concern all of us at this table for minutes.
All right, we'll move to the communication portion of the agenda in the general.
Hey, Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number, if there are any residents listening to you, YouTube, that need to reach me, my number is 248-346-0439. A little while ago, I brought before this council the idea of getting some of these established companies to adopt the medians. We're always talking about, and I'll quote the mayor, the Southfield standard, and a lot of these medians look absolutely horrible. No irrigation, no flowers, um, they just look horrible. So I would like for the administration to get back on that initiative, to get some of these companies that have been given these huge tax abatements to adopt some of these medians. The second thing, L.T.U. has gotten a lot of stuff in the city of Southfield. We have two markers that show L.T.U. as you enter into Southfield from the northern direction and the southern direction on Telegraph. Those markers are very outdated. L.T.U. is doing a lot of state-of-the-art stuff at their school. They could do some state-of-the-art upgrades on those markers. We have other companies here in Southfield besides L.T.U. There are other entrance points into the city. Are you ever going to go after anyone else and put markers in all of the entry points so that this city will reflect that it's not an L.T.U. city, that it's this all-American, diversified city, and that there are other companies here? Let's see a Lear entry point. They've benefited a lot. They've rode the gravy train for 20 years or so. Let's see a Denso marker. Denso has also ridden the gravy train, and they gave the city a hundred and fifty thousand dollars before they conveniently came before council for a tax abatement for that interpretive center that was really a bad idea and glad the people fought against it, and it did not pass. So I want this council and this administration to explore that option. And then last, I just want to say, there needs to be some ordinances put in place that will really speak to what the mayor has been fighting so hard to establish in this city, and that's the real Southfield standard. We can't keep talking about how wonderful companies are and we not have an established standard. So let's get busy and get some real work done. Thank you.
Next question, Mr. Gerard Muller.
My address is Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I was wondering, has anyone on this council inspected the state mandated public file at the planning department for this upcoming Brownfield public hearing at 7:00 PM this evening? I have, and I've discovered that it is missing three items, plus it refers to the wrong law. The three missing items are, first, there is no eligible property boundary map. Second, there is no historic and existing conditions map. And third, there is no site plan. Plus, the assessors report refers to the Brownfield law as Public Act 381 of 1966. It should be 1996, not 66. Also, let me remind you that last Monday, I pointed out to this council that your legal notice was improper regarding the Brownfield plant. That is, the Brownfield property location is written in hieroglyphics. That is, that's it. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
All right. You had to ask people. I just want to say that, um, I had brought this up before, and you are on Grand Bull, Grand Bull, I think it is, in front of the Fisher and the State Department. The land, the, all of the landscaping, there's actual signage, it says this landscaping has been provided by different companies. And I don't see, and, and when I was in, um, Franklin, the, uh, the flowers and all that, it's, it's donated by the businesses to take care of that. And I know that, um, it's, it's a beautification issue. We can't afford to do it. Um, I, I forget what city I was just in, and, and the polls that they had planners coming out of, it was donated by different companies. And I don't know if this should go, what committee it should go before, but I think we should really explore that, and it has to belong to someone for us to move forward. So I don't know if that's community relations, I don't know if there's a, so living, I don't know who it goes to, but somewhere we should, or form a new committee. I don't know, but that is something, and it, companies want the neighborhood to look nice, and I think if we gave them an avenue, they would explore that. And so I, I, I really do support that idea, and it's working in other communities.
All right, we'll wrap this up.
I just want to, I just want to say that the 1986, the two limits on Telegraph Road, that is all supported by the business people, not only just gardens, but also the water and so there's irrigation and, uh, just something we could look to the other neighborhoods and expand on that, but this one, uh, is one that we put in quite a while ago.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, does anybody know what's going on at Telegraph or...
Which branch?
Huh?
Where?
From the, yeah, the median. The median, all the way up from, uh, 11 Mile to, uh...
I didn't, I didn't bring this up.
Do you want to, I just want you to know that. We, uh... I mean, they've been there.
Do you want to?
Been working on that for months, and it's, looks like it's a bird of turtles out there working on it.
I, the update so far is that they have, they're just finishing up completing all the irrigation installation. They're just adding a few heads, kind of tweaking it. Those systems are up and functional. They've been tested. Um, when, that, what the project did, it was removed four inches of the existing soil that wasn't very good soil to get grass to grow. So in the grassy areas, four inches was removed, and then a topsoil mix that we specified was put in its place, and, and then there's a hydroseed mulch mix that, or hydroseed mix for, uh, new grass, and that was specified by us, again, because we need to be more salt tolerant and things like that. Most of the sods that come in are just Kentucky bluegrass, they're not salt tolerant, so, uh, and with the irrigation system, you know, then you don't have to worry about it, it's not thriving. It'll do well with this irrigation system in place. So that project is supposed to be complete really by, probably in the next three weeks. It'll be done next.
Make sure we pick the bird away. We just, in the scope of work, the original trees that were put in by DANS are under warrant, warranty?
The, that plant material has already been, been replaced by DANS.
Okay.
Um, our, our argument is that things didn't do very well because they didn't have the irrigation system in place. So we do have some additional set plant material, and I just actually got a call from M.DOT today, because I told them, I said, "All right, we've got irrigation, now what's going on?" And they told me that DANS contract is done, but they just have some major, some dollars, so they, that's our next step. Mary is going to work with them.
That'll be our, our next flight with M.DOT. We'll be over, making sure that they pick up the cost on plant materials that dry. And, uh, you recall that the irrigation system, um, they put it, it was, it wasn't in the, in the original spec for, for the project.
Well, they, they do the, that's a simplistic line item, like restore medians to existing conditions, and that's fine to say if it's just grass or something, but when we had established plantings and an irrigation system, I mean, that was a $400,000 project when it first went in. It wasn't a simple line item. So that was the big snaku with M.DOT.
Um, we could, on camera, I think on camera, give you, um, update on, on everything.
Okay.
And then we'll do it real quick, and that is, uh, the way trim's doing the water sewer and the, uh, the sewer connects on the west side, well, from Septic to Sewer. Uh, there's something that we've really closed our eyes to right along, and that is Oakland County doing inspections on Septic to, uh, failing. Uh, we've got to be real careful, because, you know, if we go whole hog at that, I mean, we're liable to make, uh, people either put in a very expensive thing, or their home is going to be, uh, non, you know, non-legal construction. So we've got to be real careful.
We've just, we've, Oakland County has not been doing those inspections for about over three years.
Yeah, I know. And I can't believe that nothing's...
And, and our, the, once we have a database of who's not connected, we're, we'll then be in a position to effectively communicate with these folks, and then the thought process is, is that they can bring any one of a number of private companies to certify. We just need to see a letter in their file that they have passed to them.
You got to worry about them to pass.
Yeah, well, all right.